All right, we'll just go ahead and get started. We have returned from our special meeting and there are no closed session items to disclose. So I will go ahead and adjourn the special meeting at 6:10. And we are going to shift over to our regular meeting. All right, at this time, I would like to call to order the Elk Grove City Council's regular meeting and Elk Grove Finance Authority's regular meeting concurrent agenda. Today is Wednesday, April the 13th, 2022. The time is 6:10 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Although a state of emergency remains in effect, this meeting is being held in the City Council chamber. The chamber will be open to the public. The State of California Department of Public Health strongly recommends participants wear a face covering. Members of the public may also choose to attend this meeting via the Zoom meeting platform, which allows participation either via Internet using a computer or Internet-capable mobile device, or via telephone using a landline or mobile phone. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, April 15th at 1:00 PM, and Monday, April 18th at 9:00 PM. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. In the Zoom environment, a speaker time will be displayed, counting down the three-minute time. For callers connecting direct via telephone, they can utilize the raise hand feature by pressing star nine on their phone, and the City Clerk will run a speaker timer. And after the first two minutes have passed, a single bell ding will sound, or a couple of bells will sound, to inform you that one minute remains to wrap up your comments. And when the total three-minute time concludes, a series of bells will sound. With that, that will take us over to the roll call. And for the roll call, I will start that off with Councilmember Wen.
Here.
Councilmember Spies.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suwen.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Present.
All are in attendance.
All right, thank you. And we will go on to our next item, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please address the flag and join me, and we'll have our Vice Mayor lead us.
Okay. Hand over heart, ready, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, would you please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. Next item.
Take us to Section 2, Approval of the Agenda. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, you need to council meeting with public hearing discussions on redistricting. Those redistricting-related public hearings have a set posted time for when the discussion commences, as we've seen over the last few months. Item 8.2 is a public hearing with a stated start time of 7:00 PM and may advance or fall back in the order of the agenda. As well, I'd just like to bring the attention of council that for item, the public hearing for item 8.1 was requested for a continuance from the applicant to a date uncertain. When that comes back, we would renotice that item when it comes forward, but it's something that you could take for consideration in the motion of the approval of the agenda.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda with the continuance of item 8.1 to a date uncertain.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Next item, there's nothing for closed session, which brings us to item four, Presentation and Announcements.
And that first item is 4.1, A Proclamation Recognizing National Volunteer Week with a Special Recognition for Volunteers and Police Services.
All right. It is my honor to welcome to the podium our volunteers and police services known as VIPS. And I will go ahead and read the proclamation. And this is in honor of National Volunteer Weeks, April 17th through the 23rd, 2022, with special recognition to volunteers and police services. Whereas National Volunteer Week was established in 1974 with a presidential executive order and has continued with every sitting U.S. President issuing a proclamation each year urging Americans to give their time to community outreach organizations, whereas volunteerism historically reflects the highest values of our democratic society in that regardless of the situation, station, age, race, creed, all may volunteer and thus reap the rich rewards that come from giving aid to others while improving one's own skills and widening one's horizons. And whereas the Elk Grove Police Department's volunteers and police services are a valued team of trained citizen volunteers who have been assisting the Elk Grove Police Department since 2006, and whereas in 2021, volunteers and police services donated a total of 6,200... Wait, what am I reading here? Six... There's some dots missing on mine, sorry. Hours of service entered, 4,200 telephone calls, and Service Center removed 1,317 illegally posted signs, provided 86 fingerprint cards, issued 360 disabled parking enforcement citations, and provided 748 security vacation checks. And whereas the volunteers and police services are celebrating 28 years of serving the Elk Grove community, having worked in conjunction with local law enforcement since 1994, and whereas the volunteers and police services have donated 239,978 hours of service since 1994, which translates to over $6 million in savings to the city of Elk Grove. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the week of April 17th through April 23rd, 2022 as National Volunteer Week and pays special tribute to the dedicated service and support provided by the volunteers and police services. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
I will...
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
Just thank you for the recognition. We really appreciate it. We love our job, as most of us are retirees, and we love contributing to the city of Elk Grove and the citizens of Elk Grove. So thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. And stay right there, and my colleagues and I will join you for a photo.
Thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Here, I'll stand in the middle, and here we go. We'll have...
That's good.
Does that work? Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. Those are almost always so fun to do in person versus Zoom, so I really appreciate that, these opportunities. All right, so next up, we have item 4.2, The Proclamation Recognizing April as Donate Life Month. And I'd like to call forward Chris Mateo and Kyla Aquino with Sierra Donor Services. Good evening. All right. Donate Life Month, April 2022. Whereas one organ donor hero can save the lives of eight people through the donation of organs and improve the lives of up to 75 people with eye and tissue donation, and whereas more than 107,000 patients continue to wait for life-saving organ transplants on the national waitlist, including 1,500 in our service area, and whereas Sierra Donor Services serves the Northern California and Northern Nevada communities and is the center of a dynamic interconnected system supporting donor families, local hospitals, and transplant centers in the vital mission of saving and improving lives through organ, eye, and tissue donation. And whereas in 2021, Sierra Donor Services, for the second year in a row and through a pandemic, facilitated the transplant of 407 organs, saving more lives than ever before thanks to the selfless generosity of 160 organ donors and 957 tissue donors. And whereas Californians can register to be donors regardless of their age or medical history, and registering to become an organ and tissue donor can be done on a driver's license or ID card at the Department of Motor Vehicles or online at DonateLifeCalifornia.org. And whereas in honoring all those who have given the extraordinary gift of life through living and deceased donation, it is encouraged to open conversations about giving the gift of life through organ, eye, and tissue donation. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Elk Grove hereby proclaims April 2022 as Donate Life Month in the city of Elk Grove to offer an opportunity to focus attention on the great need for more registered organ, eye, and tissue donors in the greater Sacramento region, in California, and across the nation. We welcome you. Thank you. We celebrate today with a kidney transplant recipient who's also an Elk Grove...
Resident.
Yes.
We'd love a photo.
Absolutely, we'll be down. Would you like to join me for photos? And Chris, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I mean, as someone who's, I just celebrated my fifth month after my transplant, and this is a big deal. I mean, like, you know, a lot of people think there's a lot of time you have to wait for the transplant, and yeah, it's true, but I mean, like, the quality of life after getting this means so much. I wouldn't be here five months ago if it wasn't for a gracious donation by my cousin. And I think the more that we can donate organs and time and all these other things, it's gonna be great, especially with organizations like Sierra, what they do and what they do to encourage people, it's just a great opportunity to keep living. I'm very blessed and grateful, and thank you guys for this opportunity to make this proclamation.
Thank you, Chris.
Man, Mr. Mateo, it's just so wonderful to see you in person, thriving, following your journey from social media, since we haven't been able to see each other in person. What a remarkable story. And it's also a reminder, really, to our API families out there. We have some of the lowest donation rates, and so this is a wake-up call that we all have opportunities to change lives and save lives. So thank you, and thank you to Sierra Donor Services for all the work that you do educating and expanding awareness for these services. Thank you again for joining us. All right, next up, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague for the next presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could have Marie come on up, Marie Mertz, please. Thank you. This is for the Organic Waste Awareness Month, and it's my honor, you know, to present this to you, Marie. I think like many people, I grew up in a household where, you know, my parents would tell me that, hey, there's, you know, starving people around the world, so finish your meal. And unfortunately, we don't even have to look around the world anymore. You know, in Sacramento County, there's over 200,000 people with food insecurity. And from, you know, a social aspect, that's one concern, but also from a climate aspect, there's also concern about how these organics are creating greenhouse gases and contributing to our greenhouse gas issue. You have been an advocate for this for several years, and I'll let you talk about that, I'm sure, in a minute. So I just want to, you know, honor you with that. And also, I know you have always been such an advocate for small businesses, farm-to-fork. So I really think, you know, presenting this to you is really an honor, Marie. And so I just want to say therefore, be it resolved, the City Council, the city of Elk Grove hereby proclaims April 2022 as Organic Waste Awareness Month and encourages all residents and businesses to help reduce waste, to make the city of Elk Grove a greener and more sustainable community. Congratulations.
Thank you. I actually want to say thank you to all of you and to Chris and everybody for always listening to me when I'm trying to bring something up. It is very important that we take a step toward our future. Being a green city, it is, takes a lot of effort. Being ecological-friendly, it takes a lot of effort. We know that it's not only a choice that we have to select, it is also becoming a law, and we are subject to that pretty soon. We all have to be respecting the new rules and regulation about organic waste. Food insecurity, you mentioned that, yeah, we see that. The pandemic, I think, was a wake-up call for everybody to see the world in a different way. Naming Organic Awareness Month is important. A proclamation is great. The name says, it's an awareness. It's the beginning for many things to come. I think being aware that it is important in the way that we cook at home and the way that we run our business brings consequences to our environment. New generations need to learn about this, so I want to thank you very much for that. And there's more to come. As I say, a proclamation is important, but we need to act on it. And I ask that we continue growing in our city to become a more friendly and ecological environment. There's a lot of things that we can do for small businesses. There's a lot of things that we can do for our residents to learn. And I think education is something that is very important. So thank you very much. This is the beginning, and I'm looking forward to continue working with the city to move into a more eco-friendly city.
Thanks, Marie. And please, yeah, if we could all go down for a photo, thank you.
All right, next up, we have our presentation by the Sacramento Yolo Mosquito and Vector Controlled District. I'd like to welcome up District Manager Gary Goodman.
All right, wonderful. Thank you very much, Council. I always appreciate the invitation. It's always a, I know everyone's always interested in learning about mosquitoes at this time of year, so. My name's Gary Goodman. I'm the district manager right here, Elk Grove, across Bond Road. Everybody passes by, wonder why we're breeding all those mosquitoes in those ponds over there, but we're not. I did also want to introduce your appointed board member to our board, Lynn Hawkins. I'm sure everyone is very familiar with him. He's been on the board for quite some time. I won't tell you exactly how long. So we want to try to just give an update to the council and to the residents of the city as to what we're expecting for this upcoming season, some of what our challenges are, and some of the help that we're hoping the residents can help provide. So in general, our mission is to try to protect public health. This has become even more prevalent over the last two years with the pandemic. And while we initially had a lot of questions about whether mosquitoes could transmit COVID, they cannot. It's been proven. But we are still here, a public health agency, and are looking to try to make sure that we're providing those services so that people don't get sick from vector-borne diseases. And those vector-borne diseases are things like West Nile, more exotic diseases like dengue or Zika, chikungunya, malaria. Luckily for those, we don't have those types of diseases here in our area, but we do have the possibility for that. We also monitor for ticks and Lyme disease in our area and post those things as well. We do have some Lyme disease areas specifically along the American River corridor and up in the foothills. So we want to make sure that we're doing our work and trying to get that information out to the general public to know exactly what it is that they're challenged with in terms of these vector-borne diseases. And so on a daily basis, our technicians go out and look for mosquito breeding sources. So very easy things that we can find, rice fields, irrigation ditches, those types of things. Wherever you have standing water, you're going to have mosquitoes potentially breeding in them, especially if there's a vegetation-water interface. We do a lot of green pools, so a lot of people that have not maintained their swimming pools, that's another great breeding ground for mosquitoes. We visit thousands and thousands of pools on an annual basis to be able to take a look for that. But when you have these recent rains that are going to come in tomorrow or this evening, it's going to fill up some of those general containers that you have in your own backyard, whether it be dog dishes, or an old tire, or a coffee can, or just a Home Depot bucket, something like that. And now all of a sudden, you've got that standing water, and if you're not dumping it, mosquitoes will find it. They're very crafty from that perspective. So our folks go around and look at all of these different types of sources, either dump them out or treat them with an appropriate, what we call larviciding, to try to kill the mosquito in its larval stage before they become adults. So we go through what we call an integrated mosquito management approach. Number one is public information. We do a lot, or before COVID, but we're going to start to get back into that swing of things. We do a lot of fairs, neighborhood associations, give a lot of presentations to a number of different groups, rotaries, and things like that, to just try to get the information out. We have a very active advertising campaign as well. You'll hear us on the radio, you'll see us on TV, you'll see billboards where we're just trying to let people know what the challenges are associated with, especially as we get further into the mosquito season, which is the summertime, of what they can do on their own to be able to try to help prevent this. Then we do what we call surveillance, which essentially, we set traps out throughout the district, various different types of traps that trap different types of mosquitoes. We bring those mosquitoes back to our lab, we count them and sort them by sex and species. In our area, we have about 22 different species of mosquitoes. Not all of them transmit disease, but the ones that we have most prevalent do. And then, and then we also test those mosquitoes to see if they are carrying any diseases, and specifically, West Nile virus is our biggest challenge here in the Sacramento Valley. Then we have a biological control, so if you drive by our facility and you see those ponds, we're not breeding mosquitoes in there, but we are breeding fish. We breed what they call gambuja, they're about two-inch-long fish, and we plant about 3,500 pounds of fish per year in Sacramento and Yolo County. We're probably the largest mosquito-fish breeding facility in the country. I'm very proud of that program as well. Then we have an ecological management department, and with that, we have some heavy equipment. We have a backhoe and a dump truck, and we work with landowners such as U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Casumus River Preserve, other farmers, and those types of things that are having water backing up on their property. And we can go in there and try to help clear things out and work with them on implementing what we call best management practices, so they're not breeding mosquitoes on their own property, which are then flying and having an impact on our residents there. We also have a very active drone program or unmanned aircraft service program where we're able to take pictures with, from up above, with various different filters, to be able to try to look through the vegetation and find where the water is, so we can be more efficient with our treatments. And then the last aspect of mosquito management is our chemical control. So again, when we find mosquito breeding in a place, specifically like a rice field or an irrigation ditch, we have products that are very specific to killing mosquitoes, and we'll use that. When we do have adult mosquitoes, then we will do adult mosquito treatments, which is anywhere from a backpack to a truck, or ATV, or even the airplane. And we haven't done the airplane over town in quite a number of years, but we still do active airplanes in some of our agricultural areas on the outskirts, essentially try to create a buffer so that those mosquitoes are not coming into town and having the impact there. Just a couple snapshots of what we've seen in West Nile virus activity in California over the last couple of years. You can see, last year was actually pretty low for California, 128. We usually have numbers, about double of that. The one challenge that I think are associated with West Nile virus in terms of report is it generally is underreported, because symptoms of West Nile virus, if you get bit by a mosquito, are similarly flu-like symptoms. So, you know, you start to feel a little achy, and maybe potentially after about a week or so, you recover, and you never really even go to the doctor. You just think you had a summer cold or summer flu, not that big of a deal. Obviously, in the last couple of years, that's been amplified quite a bit with the similar aspects of COVID as well. So CDC actually estimates that the numbers are significantly underreported, and that for every really reported human case that's happening, there's anywhere from 30 to 70 other people that are impacted that have had an illness but just don't get reported to the doctor. So now you're talking about, you know, thousands of people on an annual basis that potentially are getting West Nile and may not even know it. So we want to make sure that people are aware of that and that they can take the appropriate precautions to try to help prevent getting sick and transmission. This is a brief snapshot of the city of Elk Grove and the activity that we had last year. So we had 23 mosquito samples that tested positive within the city boundaries, and you can see on the outskirts there as well, part of that is in Stone Lakes, just on the other side of I-5, and a little bit further south. And then the yellow triangles are positive dead birds. So if anyone sees a dead bird, specifically a crow or a jay, please give us a call. There's actually a number, it's run through the California Department of Public Health, and we'll come pick it up, we'll test it, make sure that it died from a cat, or did it die from West Nile, because we want to know that. And then we can concentrate our efforts in those particular areas to make sure, are we finding any mosquitoes in there, and then be able to try to take care of that. So as you can see, quite a bit of activity last year from West Nile virus in Elk Grove. One thing that I know that we've talked about with the council before, invasive mosquitoes. So as I mentioned, we have 22 different mosquitoes that are typically endemic here to our particular area, and we're starting to see an influx of mosquitoes moving up from Central and South America, specifically the 80s Egypti mosquito, which is called the Yellow Fever mosquito, and then there's also the Asian Tiger mosquito. And the challenge with these is that we are starting to get them established in our area. And in fact, in Elk Grove, and I'll show a map here shortly, we did find them in Elk Grove last year. So these mosquitoes are a challenge for us. One, they love to bite people, and they like to be indoors, and so it's very difficult for us to find them. You're not going to find them in a rice field, or a backyard swimming pool, or something like that. They're in very, very small cryptic areas, and so we've, they can breed in just as small as a bottle cap, unfortunately. So they're very difficult to find, and obviously, the challenge that we have with this is that if they become established in our area, then you have the possibility of transmission of more exotic diseases like dengue, or Zika, or chikungunya, because these particular mosquitoes are very efficient vectors of those types of mosquitoes. So again, they like to be in and around homes, so this is really what you're looking for in your backyard. If you see any of these types of things, just buckets that are holding water, these are perfect examples. The picture in the center on the bottom are bromeliad plants that carries just a little bit of water, is another great source where these mosquitoes like to breed. And so that's the challenge that we have, is that it's difficult for us to go into everyone's backyard and look for these types of sources. So we really need the public's help in being able to identify, are they being bothered by mosquitoes? And if so, give us a call. We typically come out within 24 hours to take a look around and give you some advices to what you can do on your own property, and try to identify maybe some of these sources that can be taken care of very quickly, so you're not having an impact on yourself and your neighbors. So the detection of these invasive mosquitoes this past year, this is where we found, initially we found these 80s Egypti mosquitoes in 2019 up in Citrus Heights, and we've done surveillance all throughout the city of Elk Grove, but we did find it in what we call older Elk Grove there, and then in a pocket just north of Laguna Boulevard and Franklin. So they're very intensive, you see a lot of triangles there, because essentially, we are going house to house to be able to try to set traps and find them, because these mosquitoes don't fly more than about 150 meters. So they're going to be found in a very small area. So these are one of the challenges. Again, we don't have the active transmission of those exotic diseases, but we do get reports of those diseases in our boundaries, because they're reportable diseases through the county public health officer. And so when we get those, then we go out to those particular areas where we find those to make sure that we don't have this type of mosquito. Because if we have the mosquito and the person who's potentially infected, then we could have local transmission, and that's what we're trying to avoid. We do a lot of outreach by the district specifically when we find these invasive mosquitoes, and so here's some of the materials that we put out. Again, we're going door to door, we're putting these things out. If you have any questions, that's what we're here for. Please give us a call, we want to know, and we need the public's help in being able to try to identify, are you being bothered by mosquitoes? Can you get a sample for us? But we'll come out and be able to try to help you. Moving forward, essentially, we're looking at some other innovative control methods, and one of those is what they call SIT, or Sterile Insect Technique. So what that does is essentially, there's a couple different methods that do it, but essentially, you're sterilizing the males, because only female mosquitoes bite. Female mosquitoes bite because they want the protein in your blood so that they can lay the eggs. Male mosquitoes don't bite. So there's a couple different methods where they sterilize males, then they release the males into an area, they mate with the females, and then essentially, the progeny is no good. We have to kind of get past that from a district standpoint of releasing mosquitoes, right? right? That's not a good look for us, because we're, we're usually trying to kill them. But releasing thousands and thousands of mosquitoes into a particular neighborhood to be able to suppress the population has been a proven method in a number of different areas. They've done trials in the Caribbean, they're doing trials currently right now in the Florida Keys, Visalia just got approval to try to do a trial this year, and they've had a lot of success in South America with this sterile insect technique. And the technique's been around, it's just for a long time with other insects, just not with mosquitoes. And so it's nice and exciting work to be able to try to, to use some innovative non-pesticide control methods to be able to try to help suppress these populations. Obviously, we want to try to do as much outreach as we can, and let people know what the challenges are, and how they can help us, and really encourage the public to give us a call. If you're being bothered by mosquitoes, this is exactly what we do, call us, we typically, again, come out within 24 hours. The other thing I wanted to mention, I didn't bring the repellent packets, but we buy repellent by the, by the truckload. If you have an event, especially an evening event, I know for National Night Out, we do a lot of things, but any evening events, concerts, those types of things, give us a call, we're more than happy to provide that repellent for the citizens to use, because if they don't get bit by mosquitoes, we guarantee that they won't get transmission of any particular disease, specifically West Nile. And so with that, for any information, you can, you can send us an email, info@fightthebyte.net. Our email address is, is at fightthebyte.net, or you can give us a call, 1-800-429-1022. And with that, I'll answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. It made me really itchy.
Usually does.
Oh, gosh. Any questions or comments from my colleague? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, it's good to see you, as always. I, I do want to thank you and for your work. As someone, you know, my wife is a magnet for mosquitoes, so our household greatly appreciates anything you can do to stave the population. You mentioned the Zika, and I was just wondering, I haven't heard much about that lately, and then second, if you, if you could have any stats on that. And then secondly, maybe I missed it, but are, are you getting ready to roll out the sterilization program here, or what, what's that going to take?
We're investigating it now, so there, there's kind of three different methods. One method just got approval in California, and so they're going to do the trial in Visalia, so we're working closely with other districts throughout California, to just be able to try to monitor it. My guess is that it probably, the method won't be available for us in our area probably until as early as maybe next year. So they're still doing some work, having to kind of jump through some hoops from that perspective, but we're definitely keeping an eye on it. And it's nice, the fact that you have multiple different companies, or, you know, we're working with a company out of, or I'm sorry, researcher out of University of Kentucky that started one trial of it. We've been working with him for the last couple of years and trying to get that to roll out, and there, and there's a couple others that are there. So we're keeping track of it, probably won't happen for us in our area, or kind of be more widespread until probably next year. On the question of Zika, I actually just read an article yesterday where it's, they're starting to pick up a little bit more, not here in, in the Americas at the moment, or I'm, I'm sorry, not in North America, but in South America, they're starting to pick up. And in fact, they were talking about, we all hear about variants now, but they're talking about how Zika actually has different variants, and exposure initially to one may not make you immune to the second one. So similar type of story, what we're seeing with COVID. So it was the first one, because I think Zika's kind of fallen off the map over the last couple of years. Still, there are cases on an annual basis, not here, that we've seen in California, but you always have the risk of potential transmission, and so it's something that we're keeping an eye on.
Yeah, that's worrisome. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you so much for your presentation, great information.
Great, thank you very much, have a great day.
You too. All right, next up, we have our new hire introductions.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Tonight, we're going to be introducing you to our new hires and our promotions, the first quarter of 2022, which is January through March. This is the first time we've been able to do in-person introductions since the pandemic started, so we're really excited to be here and introduce some of our new employees and our promotions. So police departments first up.
Yes, sir, thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, I'm happy to introduce our five newest employees for the City of Elk Grove's Police Department. First up is Officer Anthony Piambo. Anthony was born and raised in Lodi, California, prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department. He worked for the San Joaquin Delta Police Department College. Anthony graduated from San Joaquin Delta College, January 19th of this year. Unfortunately, he's a Dodger fan, but it's okay, it's okay, we still embrace.
Wrong footy, wrong footy.
We still embrace him, yep, no. But he is one of our newest officers. Next up is Officer James Young. James was born at Offutt Air Force Base outside of Omaha, Nebraska. James served the United States Marine Corps for 22 years, retiring as a gunnery sergeant in July of 2015, thank you for your service. Prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department, he worked for the Stockton Police Department, and he enjoys spending time with his wife, and therefore, children, and two dogs. And I believe you were homicide investigator as well?
Yes, sir.
Very good, we have a lot of, a lot of experience here. And our next up is Community Service Officer Van An Nguyen. Van An was born and raised in Oakland, California, prior to joining Elk Grove Police Department. She was a CSO for California State University Sacramento. The last few years, she has served as a volunteer for our police department. Fun fact, she recently got married. Congratulations.
And she's got an excellent last name.
CSO recruit Humari Kerr. And interesting fact, a CSO recruit is a CSO who is going to be a police officer for the city of Elk Grove for our department. It's one of the programs that we established in the last about year and a half, and when of age, she will be able to be put into the academy and become a police officer. She was born in Pujam, India, and moved here with her family to the United States when she was six years old. Humari was an Elk Grove PD Explorer for three years prior to beginning her official career with us. She can fluently read and speak three languages, English, Punjabi, and Hindi. Excellent. Our, literally our newest police officer, Officer Romer de la Cruz. Romer was born in the Philippines and moved to the United States in 2012. While in the Philippines, he earned his bachelor's degree from Airlink Aviation College. Romer joined the Army National Guard in 2014, thank you for your service, and currently serves with the 425th Civil Airs Battalion. Prior to joining the Elk Grove Police Department, he worked for the LAPD, and a fun fact, Romer used to fly planes in the Philippines. These are our newest employees.
Welcome.
Welcome to the team, and thank you all for your service and commitment to our great city.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. All right, next up, our city manager.
A few more introductions, somebody that you know very well.
Yes.
Vanessa McGill. So Vanessa has, yeah. Vanessa's recently been promoted to be a community center coordinator on District 56, so she'll be working with Lana to plan and coordinate all the private functions out there, as well as other city events and activities out there, so really proud of her. She's been my assistant for about six years, she's been with the city since 2009. She started in our finance department as a customer service rep, and has been moving her way up, so I'm really sad to see her go, but happy that she's staying in the city of Elk Grove, and really proud of her, and that she's going to do amazing things over there, so congratulations.
Congratulations, Vanessa. Great work. All right.
Vanessa, I don't know what you did to the boss, but he moved you not just out of the area, but out of the building.
Shakes pat.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Jeff Warner, your Public Works Director. I have two employees to introduce to you tonight. First up is Stacy Ferris. Stacy was recently promoted to Senior Administrative Assistant. I'm very grateful for this promotion. She's been with the city since 2007. She started as a part-time employee with the police department, working as an administrative assistant for the traffic division. In 2011, she became a permanent full-time employee. She was instrumental in helping develop the PD's scheduling system, tracking weapons qualifications, and taking the lead on the E-citation program. In June 2020, she transferred to the PD IT Division and became their first administrative assistant. And then in 2021, as you know, we combined the city IT and PD IT departments into our Information Services Department. Stacy continued on as the administrative assistant for that new department, and in her words, helped build a bridge between this building and City Hall. And it is that bridge which brought her to Public Works, and again, I'm very grateful for that. In February of this year, she was promoted to Senior Administrative Assistant, she works directly with me and my team, and, and again, in her words, she's loving it, so I'm happy to say that. Outside of work, Stacy enjoys cooking, having adventures with her adult children and friends, and learning DIY projects. So welcome, Stacy. Next is a new hire, our newest Senior Civil Engineer, Sam Grimm, another fantastic addition to the team, I must say. Sam joined the city in January 2022 as a Senior Civil Engineer, working in our CIP Division. He previously worked for the Port of Oakland at the Oakland International Airport for eight and a half years. During his time in Oakland, Sam served as a resident engineer for construction projects, including runway and taxiway paving, sewer lift stations, baggage handling conveyor systems, and a variety of other facilities projects. He also managed the design of several civil projects there at the port. He is a proud native of Elk Grove, and he's, he's coming back home to Elk Grove, so he attended Pleasant Grove Elementary School, Smedberg and Sheldon High School, and outside of work, Sam enjoys spending time in the mountains, at his cabin, with his wife and two children, Ashley and Vincent. So welcome, everyone, and again, I'm very happy to have them.
Congratulations.
Welcome, and congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Matt Paulin, your Finance Director, thrilled to announce Matt Ruiz. Matt Ruiz joined our department in the city in early January as one of our finance analysts. Unlike Mr. Grimm, he is not a native of Elk Grove. Matt was born and raised in the UK, and actually, he started his career as an auditor in the city of London, and he spent time in both the public and private sectors. And interestingly enough, he spent a number of years with the British Foreign and Commonwealth Office, three years of which were spent at the embassy in Bogota, Colombia. Matt, in his spare time, enjoys playing soccer, improving on the guitar, and going to the gym, and he is currently encountering the joys of trying to buy a home in our fine city of Elk Grove, so please say welcome to Matt.
Congratulations. You left London for Elk Grove, that, that's, and it's of itself, something to celebrate. Well, congratulations to all of our new hires and promotions. You all contribute to making our city amazing, so thank you, we celebrate you, we congratulate you, thank you again for your service. All right, we will move on to our next item, public comment.
And for our attendees that are in the Zoom audience, this would be the opportunity for general public comment, to use the raised hand feature in order to place yourself into the queue, or for any of our attendees in the audience, to fill out a blue speaker card and provide it to our assistant city clerk. Members of the participating audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. City council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, there were no prior written comments submitted in relation to general public comment. As I take my attention to the Zoom environment, I do not see the raised hand function being utilized, and I do not believe we have anybody signed up for general public comment. That'll conclude public comment.
All right, thank you, I'll go ahead and close public comment, and move on to our next item, our city manager's report.
All right, Mayor, City Council, have a few items to report on this evening. First of all, Elk Grove's Original Craft Beer Event returns this Friday, April 15th, at Elk Grove Park, the Elk Grove Brew Fest. City has partnered with Beers and Sack to promote visitation and celebrate Elk Grove's craft brew scene. General admission tickets are still available, but going quickly, so for details and get tickets, visit elkroebrewfest.com. Another event that is returning after the pandemic is our Family Fun Day. Youth Commission will host Family Fun Day, which is a free event, this Saturday, April 16th, at the Old Town Plaza from noon to 4:00 PM. The event returns for the first time since 2019 to offer an afternoon with carnival games, music, and family activities. There will be food trucks there, as well as snacks and other activities. Visit the city's website for details. Happy to announce that over this last weekend, Public Works Department, sorry, Public Works Department partnered with the Sacramento Tree Foundation to plant approximately, actually 110 trees this last weekend, but there's a total of 1,700 native trees that will eventually be planted over a course of the next several years on the north side of Whitlock Parkway, that, that channel over there. This year, we hope to plant approximately 600 trees along this corridor from Franklin Creek, from Bruceville Road, to approximately Franklin High Library. This last weekend, we had a number of volunteers out there, city staff, CSD staff, and community volunteers, working with the Tree Foundation to do some amazing planting, so please join me in thanking them for those, those efforts, and look forward to many more native trees being planted in this corridor in the coming months and years. Applications for the city's and the school district's Civic Summer Program are due on Sunday, April 17th. This program is open to Elk Grove Unified School District sophomores and juniors, and offers a two-week course that provides insights into local government and the issues facing the Elk Grove community, followed by a three-week internship with local agencies, including the city of Elk Grove. Sessions begin in June. For questions or more information, contact civicsummer@gmail.com. Also, the city and Kasumus CSD have partnered to promote health and fitness for the whole family at Fit Fest, which is a free event scheduled next Saturday, April 23rd, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Elk Grove Park. The festival will host two fitness competitions, including the Elk Grove Gauntlet, produced by the city, and Warrior Z for adults, and the Kids Warrior Challenge Obstacle Course. Come cheer on the athletes and participate in free family activities that support a healthy, active lifestyle. Details are available on the city's website. And finally, each year, California uses, uses over 67 million oil filters, all of which can be recycled. The Recycling and Waste Division is partnering with O'Reilly's Auto Parts to host three used motor oil filter exchange events on April 23rd, May 21st, and June 18th, at the location on Elk Grove Boulevard, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Residents can bring a used oil filter and get new, a new filter of equal or lesser value for free. The events are partially funded from a CalRecycle grant. And that concludes my report, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Berman, for that great report. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. We will move on to our next item, consent calendar items. At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity.
And so for our participants in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to use the raised hand feature to provide public comments under Section 7, our consent calendar items. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, there was a green sheet staff memo that was distributed earlier this afternoon on regards to Item 7.9. It doesn't change any of the action requested, it just updated the documents that were associated with the agreement with that item. As I take my attention over to our participants in Zoom, I do not see the raised hand feature being utilized, I do not see any speaker slips that have been turned in. That'll conclude public comment on the consent calendar items.
All right, thank you, I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all is in favor? Aye. Motion passes. We are skipping over 8.1, and that is being continued to a future date, so that takes us to Item 8.2, in three, in three minutes.
Can you name Item 8.5 in two and a half minutes? We could take Item 8.5, it's a procedural item for CFD proceedings.
Sure.
And go rather rapid, so, and I think it would fill the space.
Excellent.
But it's two public hearings for Item 8.5, it's the 78th Annexation to CFD 2006-1 for Maintenance Services, and the 51st Annexation to Stormwater Drainage V Zone 2.
Did I do that right, Jason?
Indeed, everything looks great.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, I'm Renee Atar, Finance Analyst for the city. I'm here this evening with a presentation for proposed annexations into the city's special tax districts. As you know, the city maintains eight special tax districts, which provide funding for infrastructure for services, such as police, maintenance, street maintenance, street lighting, and stormwater drainage. and stormwater drainage. Annexations into the appropriate districts are typically part of a new development project's approval process. The requirements are specific for each project and vary according to the geographic location and building use. All of the special taxes are subject to annual rate adjustments. On February 23rd, 2022, the city council adopted resolutions of intent to annex a parcel for the Bond and Waterman Shell with the 711 and Storage Facility project into special tax districts and to establish tonight's public hearings. The projects are being proposed for annexation into the following special tax districts, CFD 2006-1 for maintenance services throughout the city, and Stormwater Drainage v. Zone 2 for stormwater drainage and runoff maintenance services. This would be the 78th Annexation into CFD 2006-1 and the 51st Annexation into Stormwater Drainage v. Zone 2. All of these assessments will be levied and perpetuated. More specifically about the project, it is a multi-use project. There is a shell fuel station with a 711 and also a storage facility on site. The project consists of 4.72 non-residential acres located at the northwestern intersection of Bond and Waterman Roads. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you for the presentation. I'd like to declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 78 open and open the public comment opportunity.
For our participants in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to provide public comment on Item 8.5. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, there were no written comments received in advance of the meeting in relation to Item 8.5, and I do not see the raised hand feature being used by our participants in the Zoom environment. We don't have anybody signed up to speak for this or the second public hearing of Item 8.5. That concludes public comment on the item.
All right, thank you. I'd like to close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing for CFD 2006-1 Annex 78 is closed.
Motion A1.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. I'd like to request the results of the ballot tabulation.
Of six possible votes, six affirmative votes were cast, authorizing the city of Elk Grove to levy a special tax at the rate apportioned and described. The measure passes with more than two-thirds of all votes cast in the election in favor of the measure and a resolution declaring the results of the election is available for council consideration.
Motion A2.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion A3, introduced in a way before reading by substitution of title only in ordinance levying and apportioning the special tax and territory annexed to Community Facilities, District Number 2006-1, Maintenance Services, Annexation Number 78, and amending Elk Grove Municipal Code, Section 3.19.010.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes. Next, I'd like to declare the public hearing for SWDF 2 Annex 51 open and open the public comment opportunity.
And again, I'm not seeing the raised hand feature being used by our participants in the Zoom environment. We don't have any speakers signed up by speaker slip and no other written comments materialized between now and then. So that concludes public comment for this public hearing aspect of 8.5.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing for SWDF 2 Annex 51 closed and request the clerk to provide the results of the ballot tabulation.
There is no majority protest of six possible votes weighted according to proportional financial obligation for the properties. Six affirmative votes were returned, the ballots approved, the proposed assessments and the proposed inflation adjustment limit described for the parcels identified in the ballots. A resolution determining the levy assessments in the district is available for council consideration.
Motion B.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. That concludes that item, and we will go back to Item 8.2.
And 8.2 is a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting a final district map for the redistricting project. And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, I'm Jason Lindgren, your City Clerk. I don't have a formal presentation at this point, as we've been doing this marathon for the last couple of months. What I will pull up just on screen is I will share our final district map. Basically, we did make the decision at the meeting of March 23rd. Online in the Zoom environment, I do have representatives from National Demographic Questions if there are any final questions. But the action tonight is the second public hearing that's required by state law, gives us a district map within the timelines that are prescribed. What we do from here is we take this map and we provide the GIS information over to our partners over at Sacramento County. That allows them to set up everything, not only in their informational systems, but also sets us up for the election. And then we'll start pushing this out on the city website. So as of the effective date of adopting this map, this map becomes effective for the city of Elk Grove, and we'll start that process of rolling it out. This map is intended to serve us up until 2030, until we get a new census. When we get the new census, probably a process of redistricting will be required at that time and reset the stage for the 2032 election process. But without any further questions, I can see who's on our Zoom environment and ready to go.
All right, while you prepare that, I'll declare the public hearing now open and open the public comment opportunity.
And so for our attendees in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to sign up for Item 8.2 to provide public comment. And we do not have any folks signed up here in the council chamber. And again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members, there were no written comments that were submitted in relation to Item 8.2 earlier in the evening. I go back to our Zoom environment, no raised hand features are used. That'll conclude public comment for Item 8.2.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing is closed.
Mayor, there's appeared to be a Doug Yocum raised hand, just when we were closing.
And Doug is our representative from National Demographics Corporation, so you might just want to throw a few words in there, but we can.
Yes, let's go ahead and patch.
It also lets us test that system out, so we'll pull him into the environment.
Yes.
And I'll just cue our staff. Mr. Yocum is our representative from National Demographics Corporation, so I won't be pulling up a speaker timer for him. And it sounds like we've got you, Doug. Go ahead.
Yes, yes. Just wanted to say from my remote environment, it's been a pleasure to help you all with this process and am pleased to see, hopefully, its successful conclusion. Thank you very much. It's good to be with you.
Thank you, Mr. Yocum.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate your work as well.
Did you motion? Did someone motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I just want to pause and thank Mr. Yocum and of course, Mr. Lindgren, for your hard work and dedication to ensuring that the city of Elk Grove followed the guidelines, followed the timeliness of getting everything done per the deadline requirement. And, you know, I think all of us agree that we wish we had more time, but what you did with that time was quite remarkable and provided ample opportunities for communities to engage, to get varieties of maps and go through the due diligence and the process to identify a map that had the least amount of concerns and really followed the intent of when we go through redistricting as it relates to keeping communities of interest intact, observing sort of those natural boundaries that might be there, the HOAs, the neighborhoods, and all of those things that we have to have a watchful eye on. So I think that this is a great map, and it's a great product from all of that hard work. So thank you for your efforts. We will move on to Item 8.3.
And Item 8.3 is a public hearing to consider an ordinance approving text amendments to Elk Grove Municipal Code Title 23, zoning, and a resolution approving the city of Elk Grove Design Guidelines Update.
Good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, members of the City Council. Antonio Ablog, your Planning Manager, and I am here tonight with Ritu Raj Sharma from the Dolan Group, here to present to you the city design guidelines update. This update has been a long time in the works. We had to work around some state legislation and COVID, but ultimately, we were able to work with the community, staff, our industry working group, and other interested parties to present these guidelines to you tonight. Just a brief overview of where these guidelines sit within our regulatory and policy-related documents. We have our overarching general plan, which lays out the community vision for the future of the city. We have our zoning code, which is the primary implementation tool of the general plan, which is more related to standards such as land uses, height limits, and setbacks, and performance requirements for each of those zoning districts. Then we have the city of Elk Grove Design Guidelines. The city of Elk Grove Design Guidelines also implement the general plan, but they more relate to urban design, pedestrian circulation, community and neighborhood identity, and residential, commercial, and industrial project design. As far as a brief history of the design guidelines, the existing design guidelines were originally adopted in 2002. There's been a few updates since then, but really, the last relevant update to those was in 2007. So the overall document itself is almost 20 years old, with the latest update being almost 15 years ago. So the guidelines are really in need of an update, and you could see from the timeline that they were originally adopted 20 years ago. And I'll give you some examples of kind of the need for the update as requested by council and then proceeded by staff. Up at the top of the screen, you could see some examples from what the original guidelines called for as far as commercial and retail development. A lot of, you know, stucco design, a lot of hip roof forms. And as far as what we're seeing today, a lot has changed. You could take these back 20 years, and they think they're really from far out in the future, but these are what we're accomplishing nowadays in Elk Grove. You could see the new Hyundai building, it's getting ready to open soon. You can see one of the office buildings on Longleaf Court that was developed a few years ago, and one of the restaurant pads at the Ridge Shopping Center that really kind of exemplifies some of that contemporary commercial design. Some more examples of commercial design, what appears in the existing guidelines are on the left side of your screen. You could see one of the, I believe it's the Home Depot Shopping Center and then the Target Shopping Center below that. And as far as things that we're doing within the past few years, you can see the Elk Grove Powersports Building, a really unique, modern design. And then below that, if you compare those two images side by side, that's the same shopping center with the Target Shopping Center. You could see some new additions to that that are, you know, very contemporary, but they also match what's there. So that's one of the things we're also trying to accomplish with the guidelines is how to match new development with some of those existing centers. We also address industrial development. Our existing guidelines are kind of lacking in industrial development guidelines, but we've made sure to tackle that. You can see image from the existing guidelines, not much to go on, but what we're striving for is some of the industrial design that you see on the right side of the screen there. You have the Elk Grove Food Bank, which is new construction, just little details that make that small building stand out and make it a nice industrial building. And as far as opposite of a small building, you have the Amazon Service Center, which I believe is about 130,000 square feet, but they've done a lot to dress that building up and make it a nice addition to our industrial area. We also address multifamily development. Again, on the left side of the screen, you see some of the examples from what's in the existing guidelines. And on the right, you see some of our newer examples of newer construction, the park at Laguna Springs, which is a senior multifamily development, a really good example of a Mission or Santa Barbara-style architecture. And then the Bruceville Point Senior Housing Project below that, it's a contemporary Craftsman design, which is not something that was really as prominent when the original guidelines were adopted. And then finally, our single-family development, we review a lot of single-family development projects, our existing guidelines, does have a set of styles. It doesn't really go into how staff or the development community interpret those. It does have really good examples of what makes a good Tudor-style or Craftsman-style home, but those are really hard for staff to interpret as far as looking at how homes are designed today, which you see examples below, ranch-style homes, modern-style Craftsman homes, or even contemporary homes. We're really providing flexibility in how to provide those while maintaining architectural quality across the board. So as far as the design guidelines, the design guidelines are applied to new development, including redevelopment of old centers. Mostly, things like custom homes are exempt, but subdivision homes, those are things that come through design review. And as far as the process itself, design review can happen at the zoning administrator level, the planning commission level, or can be heard by the city council. And new master home plans can also be approved by the Development Services Director. We don't plan any changes to that approval process, just the actual guidelines themselves. So that's my brief introduction. I will now turn it over to Ritu Raj Sharma from the Dolan Group, who will kind of go through the specific details of the update. And feel free, if there's any questions during his presentation on specific details, feel free to ask those questions. Ritu Raj or myself will be happy to answer those.
Mayor, Council members, staff, thank you, Antonio, for the brief introduction. Antonio touched on whether design guidelines fit in the city process. What I'm going to talk about is more about, he kind of touched on why it needs to be changed, as you could see from the images between what was in the guidelines and what is guiding development and what is actually being built. There was kind of a miscommunication both with kind of the trends of what's kind of happening and also as in the one kind of things being buildings and building types being addressed that are being built now with, you know, as you can see with home prices, you know, the smaller homes, the different kind of housing typologies, different kind of commercial buildings being developed and which are not being addressed in the old design guidelines. So the overall process was like, you know, it was not addressing both, we also needed to modernize the existing design guidelines, but we also needed to fill in the gaps where it was not addressing. And the other thing that Antonio did touch a lot, a little bit about it, Ritu's adopted very early on and things were patched on as we think so. There were a lot of things that was in conflict with the zoning code and the general plans. We also went through the whole design process and cleaned it up. Yeah, so like I said, the goal is to modernize the city's design guideline. And also, as in we wanted very early in the process, we talked with staff, the goal is to have clarity of language. I, you know, we write design guidelines, but also I'm an architect and a planner, so we are also on the other side of, you know, submitting applications in other cities. So when we read design guidelines, it's really helpful if it's clear and concise so that there's an interpretation that you get from reading a design guideline is the same as what the staff would have when they read. So that would be a sense of like, you know, clarity of process for the development application. So we wanted to also create a design review tool that would serve both the city and the community. So, you know, the developments could still happen, but in the sense and scale that the city of Elk Grove wants to happen. So like Antonio mentioned, we did start off a little early in between state laws changing, so we took a little bit of a fact-finding mission, for lack of a better word, as in it was trying to understand how it would impact us. So overall, it was a very iterative process, both with the staff, iterative and a collaborative process, I should say, both with the staff. We had a couple of meetings with staff, continuously, biweekly meetings, plus we also took an extensive deep dive into the existing documents to find out where it's kind of lacking. And we also had a very extensive collaborative process, both with the larger community, both with the development community in particular, and the public. So there were numerous processes where the public and the development community provided us feedback. We incorporated those comments, went back to them. And we also had a good study session with the Planning Commission where we kind of took in the feedback and kind of addressed them. So we had a planning commission hearing a month back, and we turn now today in front of you. Just a brief summary of where we were, where we had interaction with the larger community public. We kind of, like I said, we had industry working group sessions focused on, because the design guidelines in some ways are very important to the development community because it directly influences their work. But we also had a larger public process where we kind of involved the larger public and got comments from them. So we've had an extensive iterative process where we got feedback from the larger community and selective individuals and kind of brought for the design guidelines. So how the design guidelines being updated, just in general, I don't know, and how regularly, if you looked at the old design guideline, the old design guideline was a little bit difficult to read, it was very verbose, and it was a lot of paragraphs. So the whole idea was to make it a much more user-friendly format. We felt the applicant could be somebody who's very new to the development process, or it could be a seasoned developer, so we wanted to make sure that the applicant could easily understand what the design guideline meant. We also wanted to clarify any words that were, you know, not easily understandable, address new building types, and also kind of make sure that there was a good representation of what the text was with graphics and photographs so that the intention was very clear. The next page just shows an example of how the new design guidelines are structured. As you can see, most of the requirements are in bullets, so it's a clear understanding exactly, you know, as in what's kind of being required. And within, and in the page, or the following page, you'll see either diagrams or graphics or photographs to illustrate exactly what the intent is. So it is kind of a clear and concise process and a graphic presentation of what the requirements That was kind of an overall big picture, and I'm just going to talk about some of the major changes by chapters. Chapter 2 is administration. This was merely cleaning up some of the existing language that was there. We also wanted to make it clear that when the new design guidelines would be applicable from what date, and also if there was an existing, the city does have existing. And also if there was an existing, the city does have existing suburbia plans, you know, like CIPA and the old town area plans. As to where the design guidelines, citywide design guidelines would impact and where they would not impact. So we had to kind of clarify that, those languages. Single family residential, that was kind of quite a lot of focus for both our staff, the development community. For us, the entire design guidelines, we always wanted to focus on how the neighborhood feels. I think it's very important for us to understand, you know, that it kind of, how buildings interact with the street, how the sidewalks interact, how it's a spaces for people to walk around. So we kind of created an objective streetscape. It specifically focuses on the streetscape, the building scale, mass, color. And we also wanted to, overall in the document, we did want to make it more flexible. There is state laws about being it objective, but we also did not want it to be a very formulaic, that you could only do one option for it. So the previous, for example, the previous design guideline had, if you had a certain number of home plans, you had to have a certain number of plans and certain number of elevations. We kind of flipped that around and gave them an additional opportunity that you could do less number of plans, but maybe more number of elevations. So from a streetscape perspective, you'd have more variety. So the idea was to create more flexible, yet still meet the state standards and kind of create that variety along the streetscape. Antonio showed a little bit about styles. We addressed specific styles and more in objective manner so that it meets the state code. So there's ways to, a different set of, I mean, guidelines and requirements that you'd have to make. But like, there's larger amounts of requirements and you have to meet three or four of them. So every building's not going to look the same. We did, understanding that homes are getting smaller, you know, there was a, the previous guideline did kind of did not address the fact that smaller lots might have different requirements. So we did address some of the concerns, like requirement of street trees, two street trees along every house. You know, we've kind of addressed it more as if the homes were smaller, maybe that requirement would be just for the street tree and not for the individual trees. And also addressing some of the staff's concern about trash collection on cluster homes. So when it's kind of small lot, single family houses, how does trash get collected and things like that? Knowing that garages play a very important visual impact on the streetscape. We've kind of specifically addressed how garages and what size of homes and what size of garage frontages you can address. So, and also given a wide range of variety of the number of garage types that could use, that you could fit within a master plan. And like I said, we also did want to introduce new building types. Alley loaded homes, as you know, is not very prominent here in Elk Grove as yet. But we feel as things change, you know, as there's a requirement of more density, there might be requirements for alley loaded homes, et cetera. So we did want to address that issue right now so that in the future, when somebody does come in with an alley loaded product. At least the staff and the council has an idea as to how to interpret those. Multifamily, also in some ways it was similar. We always worried about scale, transition. And with multifamily, similarly, I mean, you know, the idea of like, how does it transition and fit into the neighborhood context, right? If you kind of have something else right next to the multifamily houses. One of the changes we did talk about, and which is different, is right now, there is a hundred foot requirement that if there's a multifamily being proposed right next to a single family house, it has to be 100 feet away from the existing single family. We did look at it as being more of a tiered approach, depending on the scale and the size of the multifamily. So the multifamily was taller, then it would be further away. But if it was not, it was similar in scale to the existing single family, maybe it could be a little closer. So we felt that was more appropriate and looking at it in the context than having a blanket, one for all approach. And we've also addressed objectively as per the state laws and how buildings get treated in terms of facade. As buildings get taller, longer and bigger, that you need to have, you know, facade treatments, vertical and horizontal setbacks.
Can you go back a slide real quick, just because that was a graphic that stood out to me? So there in the bottom portion, it took me two or three reads to figure out what we were talking about there. Because the step back in the diagram is the exact opposite from the listing of the setbacks on the other side. And so if you're going from the, in the listing, you're going from the nearest possibility, which is the setback down at the bottom. Down to the last item F is the 70 foot setback up at the top. So it just, I don't think we can change it at this point, but I just want to say, in future iterations of this type of a thing, you might want to have it correlate horizontally, just to make it easier on the reader.
Okay. I mean, we could talk with staff and see as like, you know. And just on the last section, on the non-residential side, we also, these include everything from commercial centers to industrial parks to business parks. So we kind of looked at it as to especially as to how buildings relate to the street, how the pedestrian circulation works. It's not just talking about the automobile. Maybe there's places to integrate it with existing community. And on top of the overall, there's two sets of guidelines within this. Like there's the larger non-commercial, non-residential guidelines. And within that, there's a subsection that specifically addresses, if you're looking at commercial centers, there's additional set of guidelines for a big box retail. There's additional set of guidelines because it's such a wide range of building types that just having a general set of guidelines, it doesn't make sense. So you have the master set of guidelines for non-residential development and then additional set of guidelines depending on the type of project. So we deal with commercial centers, big box retail and light industrial business parks as additional set of guidelines on top of the overall guidelines. So as you can see, as like, these are just some examples, but it's not just on the building. There's also a creation of like, creating a place, place. How do you kind of create a sense of place so that these are not lifeless, you know, outer shopping centers, but rather kind of creating a sense of place? So there's a special emphasis on that. And also, as you can see, as like, you know, changes in materials, facades. And the idea of like, you know, having simple bullet points that it's kind of easily relatable between the bullet point and what shows on the images. And that actually concludes my presentation. I'm here for questions. I did want to thank what the city and the staff and the community. It's been a wonderful experience for us, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll go ahead and declare the public hearing is open and open up the public comment opportunity.
So for our participants in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity for providing public comment by using the raised hand feature for item 8.3. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, there were no written comments that were submitted in relation to item 8.3 prior to the meeting. We don't have anyone signed up to speak for here in the chamber. We do not have the raised hand function being utilized with our participants at Zoom. It'll conclude public comment for item 8.3.
All right, I'll declare the public hearing is closed and open it up for questions, comments for my colleagues. Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Antonio, I just want to thank you and the Dalton Group and your team for your work on this. I really liked it. Maybe it's because it hasn't been updated in so long, but I just really appreciated the, you know, the different facade treatments on here. I think the pictures, these design guidelines really get at what we as a city want to see going forward in our community. And I like the process and the way you went about it and making it a transparent process that not, of course, included the community. But also included the people that, who would actually use this and trying to make it more user friendly. Because, you know, a set of instructions on a shelf that nobody can understand and use, it doesn't help anybody. And so I really appreciate your consideration of that and recognition of that. So, and then some of the things that I think have been, you know, causing issues in our community with these smaller homes. The trash can placements, the, you know, requirement for trees when you don't even have a lot wide enough for both of them. And then the garages, when you're just looking at, on a narrow lot, looking at just one all garage. Those types of things, trying to get at that and make it more of an appealing design for the community. Is, is just really, really great. So really, really appreciate all your hard work on that. I'm having to make a motion, but I wanted to defer to my colleagues if they wanted to make some comments first.
That sounds good. Any other comments? Question, yes, sir?
Yeah, I just want to echo what the Vice Mayor was just saying and thank you guys for the thorough, not only process as he mentioned, but also just the result, the end product. But the one thing I would say that is the next maybe goal that we put in front of ourselves is how we look at what we're trying to encourage. And bake that into our design guidelines. Specifically, there was the example in the residential portion where there was a separated sidewalk, which I think is aesthetically superior neighborhood to an attached sidewalk. But if we don't specifically enumerate the benefits that we might be willing to bestow on a project, should they go that route relative to setbacks, that type of thing? Who will maintain the street trees if it's between the sidewalk? You know, that becomes a point of contention. So the more that we anticipate stumbling blocks and maybe call them out in there and put them forward as pieces of negotiation. So that, you know, it signals to, as Darren said, that the people who will be using this document. That these are points where the city is ready to negotiate in order to get something that's mutually beneficial. So thank you guys for your work.
Thank you. Excellent comments from my colleagues. Don't have much to add to that, other than, you know, I, of course, like to see these updates. And particularly, I really appreciated the project process of the various stakeholders, as mentioned by the Vice Mayor. It really created a collaborative process, transparent process. And, you know, particularly within our development communities, who will be working within these guidelines and restrictions. I think that you did an excellent job capturing that. So, great job. I do have a motion on the table. I'm looking for a second.
I'll have to read it.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to introduce and waive the four reading by substitution of title only. An ordinance finding that no further environmental review is required pursuant to state secret guidelines. Section 15183 and adopting amendments to Title 23 zoning of the City of Elk Grove Municipal Code related to the Elk Grove Design Guidelines Update.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, motion two.
Motion two.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, thank you. We will move on to our next item, item 8.4.
An item 8.4 is a public hearing to receive information regarding California Assembly Bill 461 and to consider an ordinance making the necessary findings adopting a military equipment use policy. If I may, I can kind of do the jump in in order to project this onto our Zoom environment.
Oh, please do.
Yeah, so let me just hop in there. And you should be able to use the keyboard and mouse and be able to control the presentation.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening. My name's Tamara Lopez and I'm a senior administrative analyst at the police department. And here with me tonight is Sergeant Greg Moore, who serves as our tactical commander of the department. Tonight, we're going to be briefing you on Assembly Bill 481, which covers the use, funding and acquisition of military equipment at the police department as defined by the bill. Just a brief background on the bill itself. In September of 2021, Governor Newsom signed the bill into law and it went into effect on January 1st of 2022. The bill requires the governing body to adopt an ordinance approving a military equipment policy in order for us to continue using any equipment we acquired prior to January 1st of this year. And to purchase and fund any additional military equipment as defined by the bill going forward. The bill also requires the police department to submit annual reports to the city council regarding any uses of the equipment. Any complaints we might receive from the public, the cost and quantity of the equipment and any equipment we intend to purchase over the next year. All of this is contained within our policy, which was posted on our website over 30 days ago as required by the bill. Military equipment is a special term defined by AB 481. It does not have to be military grade, nor does it have to be surplus equipment given to us by the military directly. A lot of it is standard law enforcement equipment needed for basic operations and the safety of our citizens and our officers. Staff at the police department conducted an inventory of our equipment and compiled a list of items that meet the guidelines established by the bill. And Sergeant Moore is going to touch on those shortly. This next slide is not an all inclusive list, but does contain many of the items and the full list is found attached to our policy.
To give you guys an insight into the inventory that we have here at the police department, I'm not going to enumerate everything, but it can all be found on the military equipment list that was attached to the policy on the public website. Some of the things that we use that have been on here since we incorporated as a police department in 06 are things like our chemical munitions, flashbang diversionary devices, which we have used outside of homes to alert people of presence, trying to get them to come out of homes. Less lethal options that allow us varying levels of force that don't rise to deadly force and can help us facilitate a peaceful resolution to many incidents. Some of the newer equipment that is on that list that has recently been obtained by the police department is our Lenko Bearcat, which many of you up there I know have seen it. Public events is our armored vehicle, which we have been able to use to immediately go into any given situation without having to take officer safety into the consideration because it is a 360 degree armored vehicle. We've also used it in suspects have fled back to their homes who were right across the street from an elementary school. We were able to place that armor in between the suspect and the school, knowing that if something were to happen, nothing's going to get past the armor that's provided. Another piece of equipment that we have is our mobile command center that we have recently purchased. What this does is basically takes the state of the art Arctic center that we have here at the police department and makes it available to us in the field. And we can basically take it anywhere we can drive an RV. So we're able to bring all that intelligence out to the field for, be it the tactical commander, incident commanders, missing person, command posts. Anything where we need that out in the field, we can take it virtually anywhere. Recently, we've taken it all the way up to Harold, helping the Gulf Police Department on a tactical event. And then the final piece of equipment that we utilize recently is our UAS program. What that basically does is provides our UAS pilots who are on patrol, basically a helicopter in their trunk. Before, we would have to rely on the Sacramento Police Department, the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department, who are always gracious enough to help us with their air assets. Now, with the technology that is in these UAS platforms, we have a FLIR that is just as good as what's in the helicopter that we can basically launch out of the trunk of a patrol car. Which means once a missing person goes out into a field, in minutes, we can have a aircraft up looking for that person. Recently, we've had armed subjects waiting around corners that the UAS pilot was able to alert the K-9 team searching that they were in the backyard, giving them a heads up, making it safer for everyone. They're also draw these incidents quicker, which doesn't expose our public to any additional risk with people running around backyards looking for avenues of escape. This is a quick snapshot to kind of give you guys an insight as to why we have some of this equipment, how we use it. There's much, there's many more items on the list, but hopefully this gives you a snapshot into why we use this equipment.
The bill states that the governing body may only approve the policy that we've proposed if four findings are made, and I'll touch on those briefly. The military equipment must be necessary for the safety of our officers and the public. Our proposed policy will safeguard the public's welfare, safety, civil rights and civil liberties. The military equipment identified in our proposed policy is reasonably cost effective compared to any alternatives. And any past use of the equipment must comply with policy we had in place at the time or corrective action must have been taken. Staff at the police department is confident that all four findings can be made and recommends that the city council adopt the required findings and introduce reverse reading and ordinance adopting our military equipment policy and allowing our continued use, funding and acquisition of military equipment as defined by the bill. With that, do you have any questions for us?
All right, thank you for your presentation. I will declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity.
For our attendees in the Zoom environment, this would be the opportunity to provide public comment in relation to item 8.4. Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, there were no written comments that were received prior to the meeting in relation to item 8.4. We do not have anybody, I believe we have anybody signed up in the audience to speak under this item. And I do not see the raised hand feature being used in Zoom. That'll conclude public comments for item 8.4.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and declare the public hearing is now closed. And open it up for any questions or comments for my colleagues. We'll start with Councilmember Nguyen, if you have any questions or comments.
I do have a question, actually. This might be for our city attorney. Is there a limit on how many items were, you know, I don't know, this is new to me. So is there a limit on how many items we can have, the city have or whatnot?
So it's a new statute, so it's new to everyone, including all the jurisdictions in California. in California. There's not an express limit, they just have to be identified on the policy.
And then what happens, because I'm reading through this, and some of these have a lifespan. What happens to the item? Are we supposed to report those as well too? As, let's say we're reporting this now, and say tomorrow, something breaks down, right? So is there like a?
So you have to, we have to update it every year, but you don't have to keep updating as you go if a piece of equipment outlives its useful life or it breaks, but when you bring things forth in the annual report, you have to identify the equipment you have that you're using at the time.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all the questions I have right now, thank you.
Councilmember Spears, anything?
No questions.
Councilmember Hugh?
I have all kinds of questions, but none, none for staff, thank you very much. I would like to make the motion to introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance adopting a military equipment use policy, approving the use of military equipment, establishing reporting requirements for the funding, acquisition, and use of military equipment by the Elk Grove Police Department.
All right.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you for the presentation. All right, we've already done eight point five, so we will move on to our regular agenda items with nine point one.
We do have one item, it is item nine point one, which is consider policies for in-person public meetings in the chamber. Mayor, vice mayor, council members, I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk, and I have a formal presentation. This is a continued discussion from when we were back in the Zoom environment back in February 23rd, and we decided to make the decision to come back into the chamber. This is our third meeting that we've been back in the chamber. Since we've been back, we've been running a hybrid environment in which we have a Zoom environment, Zoom participants that can log in. We do the noticing requirements that are required in order to allow people to have that venue, in order to come through on Zoom, but we also have the chamber doors open. Part of what we've all been seeing is the progress of humanity versus COVID as the time has rolled on. And part of what we've found is that in the COVID environment, we've been very set in a pivot motion. Pivoting is great until it sends kind of different messages, because we're prepared at all times in order to switch in a different direction. And where the staff recommendation is coming from is for us to return fully to in-person. We've been doing this for our city commissions and committees, that they've been phasing through the month of March and into April to be back fully in person, but part of that pivot is it sends some messages of uncertainty, and what we prefer is to actually have some certainty in the government environment of saying, if you want to come down to City Hall, we're open, please do come. Beyond that, there's just kind of the functions that occur from a staff perspective, which is that our ability to have conducted this is from some wonderful ingenuity from our information technology department for us to string these kind of apparatus together. They're wonderfully fun to operate and maintain and monitor as the time goes on, but they do present their own challenges as we go forward. And so part of it from the staff perspective is just kind of streamlining our operations and getting us back to business as usual. So, from the staff perspective, what that recommendation would do is that we would start reducing down the verbiage that might be seen in all of our, in all of our agendas, as we would be removing, and the request from staff is to discontinue the use of the Zoom platform. Mentioned in the staff report is that that doesn't stop us from projecting our meetings out. We've always been throughout COVID and even prior to that, we've used the Granicus platform, which provides a live feed of our meetings, but it's also where the meetings are archived. And when you look at kind of the participation rates that occur, and actually the more robust experience that's occurring in Granicus with the video and the audio, we have hundreds of viewers that are participating in that manner and also gravitating back towards those uses. When we talk about the Zoom environment, we have a handful of folks, and it's, in order to keep up all the processes that we're doing, it's a lot of work, which isn't yielding a lot of process or change that we're seeing in terms of the public participation element. I think folks still like to come down to City Hall. Of course, we wouldn't be removing any of those elements, that folks can still contact us via email, phone messages, they've got numerous opportunities in order to provide public comment to us if they cannot make it to the moment in time of our council meetings. But we're also here the second and fourth Wednesdays of every month, for the most part, except when we take breaks, and we had that opportunity for the public to come down and participate and provide public comment on our items. But if there's any further questions, I'm available, and otherwise, we can open up to our Zoom environment participants, who are, we do have a few that are still here, although none have signed up yet to speak on item nine point one, and go from there.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity.
And so for our participants in the Zoom environment, this would be that opportunity to use the raised hand feature. Mayor, vice mayor, and council members, there were no written comments that were received in advance of the meeting in relation to item nine point one, as I take my attention back over, don't see the raised hand feature being utilized, nor do we have anybody signed up to speak here in the chamber. That'll conclude public comment for item nine point one.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity, and I share what your findings and what you've shared, Jason, and I think it's time to come back in person, and we always have the technology already in place, should something happen, to go back and what we've been doing for, for over two years with our Zoom platform, but I think, you know, at least from my point of view, coming back to status quo of how, you know, running our government meetings in person, knowing that all of the various forms of communication are available to all members of the public, so that's my opinion on that, so, but my colleagues, I'd love to hear from you.
Can you hand me a hello? Let's do it.
Sounds good.
Can we get a motion?
Yeah. So, I don't think we need a motion.
Oh, we don't need a motion.
Yeah.
All right.
I think we're all in agreement.
I think we have the direction, so for our meeting, when we come to April 27th, we'll be phasing out, having the link that goes, but we will very welcome everyone to show up to our meetings and to provide comments on items and encourage that public participation, but we'll just be narrowing down some of the chaos that come, that came from COVID.
And I want to recognize our IT department and you for your flexibility and working through these challenging times to allow us to conduct government and business and being adaptable. And there's been so much uncertainty, we were going to come back, and we couldn't, and all of that, so just want to recognize everybody. I know it's, it's very challenging and very tough to coordinate all of that, so to all of the staff, we thank you.
Absolutely.
We will go on to our next item at that, at this time, and I would like to convene the city council and finance authority joint regular meeting.
And as we open up this item, I do just want to make a statement that the city council serves as the Elk Grove Finance Authority, your membership is the membership of the Finance Authority, but there is no additional stipend or compensation that comes from your service on the Finance Authority. It's the nature of the position that you have. As we open up this item, we do a roll call of both the city council and the Finance Authority, and by a visual roll call, I see that all 10 members are present for this item, so all five, and you serve roles as both. As we go through this item, we'll be noting that you'll be taking actions both as the city council and the Finance Authority, and we just kind of make note of that as we move through the items, but I think the important part is to get to the items, and that's 10 point two, which is to receive a presentation on the police department long-range facility functionality study.
All right, good evening.
Kind of weird, right? It does it all itself. There we are. You should be able to use the keyboard, Sam, to navigate through.
Thank you, Jason. All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Samuel Grimm, Senior Civil Engineer and Public Works for the Capital Improvement Program Division. I'm here tonight to present the police department long-range facility functionality study. I'll shorten that for the rest of the presentation to just the study. Tonight, I will share background, summary of study activities, proposed tenant improvements, budget, and next steps, including staff's recommendation for council to receive information about the study and provide feedback. This study has extensive history, going back to 2019, starting with an overall assessment of city department space needs. This prior effort included identifying space needs, staffing levels, and functionality of existing facilities. One clear takeaway from this effort was the need for additional space for the police department. Around that same time, the 9362 Studio Court property came up for sale. Council acted on this opportunity and authorized acquisition of 9362 Studio Court, supplying the police department with much-needed space. Two bureaus were identified to relocate to the new building, leaving behind vacant space and existing facilities. As a result of the vacancy, staff identified the need to further analyze how police department operations could function more efficiently. This study considers police department staff and operational needs in the near, intermediate, and future terms. In general, the study includes recommendation, recommended floor plans that will meet the police department needs over the next 10 years. In January of 2021, we kicked off the study effort, identifying stakeholders, setting expectations, and visiting existing facilities to validate and update background information. Between February and March of 2021, we conducted design charrettes to review the existing space, consider prior recommendations, and adjust space needs based on live feedback from stakeholders. Design charrettes are a participatory planning process where stakeholders actively engage to create designs and implementation plans in real time. From April through July, we developed efficient and functional floor plans to make best use of existing space. We then prepared total estimated project costs based on the new floor plans and coordinated with city management and the finance department to develop a plan to deliver the proposed This study focused on three city-owned police department facilities. One is located at 10190 Iron Rock Way, just south of the city's animal shelter. The other two locations are 8380 and 8400 Laguna Palms Way, just across the street from City Hall. All proposed tenant improvements are geared towards repurposing vacated space and remodeling existing space to optimize police department operations and account for additional staffing as our city grows. The improvement highlights include remodeling the women's locker room to include up to 36 additional lockers at 10190 Iron Rock Way, enlarging the briefing room, reconfiguring spaces to provide additional offices, workstations, storage, and conference rooms, one of which is available for public interactions, remodeling the training space, transcription area, server room, and mailroom, creating space for the new mobile field force and the volunteers and police service program, and repurposing space into new offices for more sensitive Up here, we have the schedule showing all police department facility projects. The 9362 Studio Court and PD Campus Improvements projects are actively in construction and are anticipated to wrap up in the fall of this year. 10190 Iron Rock Way has completed schematic design with anticipated completion of construction next spring. Both 8380 and 8400 Laguna Palms Way are ready to kick off designs this month with anticipated completion of construction in the summer of next year. This table includes the estimated total project costs for the police department facility projects. Following this presentation, the finance department will present a staff report seeking council approval to fund the projects. This, oh, sorry. The study concludes that the proposed tenant improvements and resulting floor plans will meet the staffing and operational needs of the police department for approximately the next 10 years. The study recommends with proceeding and funding, with funding and construction of all the proposed police department tenant improvements. Unless staff receives comments from council contrary to the findings of the study, staff will proceed with the study recommendations. I'm here to answer any of your questions. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for that. I will go ahead and open up the public comment opportunity.
And this will be the opportunity for members in the Zoom environment to use the raised hand feature in order to address item 10 point two. Mayor, vice mayor, and council members, there were no written comments received in, in advance of the meeting in relation to item 10 point two. As I look over our listing of participants in the Zoom environment, the raised hand feature is not being utilized. That will conclude public comments for item 10 point two.
All right, I'll close the public comment opportunity. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? Yes, Councilmember Hugh.
Thank you. I do have a question, and simply a procedural run, and you may or may not be the right person to answer it, Sam, given that I, we just met you earlier tonight, but this is the first time I ever recall having a presentation like this, a study of recommended facility improvements, be conducted under the auspice of the financing authority. Why, why are we doing that?
So I can take a brief attempt at this. It's a unique opportunity, and we agree on our end as well. We're providing the information that is included in the finance department's staff report, so we inform them with our estimates, and they have some of that information as well.
And so is there an aspect of this that has to do with the financing of these improvements, and that's why we're, what the nexus is to do this as a financing authority?
Yes, that's true. There is an aspect of the Finance Authority approval of financing that is related specifically back to some of these, one of these projects specifically.
Okay. Interesting. Yeah, interesting. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Anyone else? Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just want to, I turned it off. Sam, by the way, good job on your, I think it's your first one, right?
It is.
Okay, great job.
Thank you.
I just, and want to thank you, Kara, and the entire team for, for all your work here. This is a much-needed facility. It's, it's not, it's not ideal for, for us, but it's, it's what we can do, it's what we can afford, being good stewards with our funds, and we want to make sure, you know, our police department has what it's need, what it needs to continue to protect our community, so, thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation. I don't see any other questions here, so this is just to receive our presentation. Excellent job on your first presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we will go on to item 10 point three.
Item 10 point three will be a joint public hearing of the Elk Grove Finance Authority and the city council, the city of Elk Grove, to consider adoption of resolutions authorizing financing of public improvements and approving a lease agreement, related documents and actions, and additional actions for all the budget adjustments necessary to complete the financing transactions for the police facilities improvements, as well as the budget and capital improvement program adjustments needed for the 10190 Iron Rock Way Tenant Improvements Project.
All right. Good evening, Mayor St. Allen and members of the city council. My name is Kara Taylor Seaman, and I'm a finance analyst at the city of Elk Grove.
And if I might just interrupt, I'm just going to grab the screen that you're doing and share it in our Zoom environment, so folks can see that. And I think I've got it there. You should just be able to use the keyboard and proceed.
Okay, sounds great. I'm here this evening to present the public hearing for you to consider the financing of improvements at the police building facilities through the lease, through a lease revenue bond, as well as adjustments to the city's budget and capital improvement program that will accompany this.
There we go.
The city has been working with, or the city staff have been working with a financing team that consists of consultants, all of whom have had a long and successful history of debt financing with the city. The consultants are joining us in the Zoom environment. They are Jones Hall, who is our bond and disclosure counsel, Dave Fama and James Waziniak are participating. Fieldman Rolapen Associates is the city's finance advisor, their financial advisor, and Unshu Reardon is participating. And then finally, Stiefel Nicholas and Company is our, the city's underwriter, Eileen Gallagher and Estella Carion is, are both participating. As far as some background, the police department has identified, as you just heard, some spacing needs that are critical to accommodate their staff and non-patrol duties. The needs have been documented in the Civic Facilities Assessment Master Plan, which was adopted back in November of 2019, and then what you just heard, the Police Department Long Range Facility Functionality Study, which was just presented, and I had to practice that several times to get it right. There are six capital projects that Sam just identified in that functionality study, and these are the six projects. The first one is the Studio Court Acquisition and Remodel Project, and then there is the 8380 Laguna Palms Way Tenant Improvement Project, the 8400 Laguna Palms Way Tenant Improvement Project, PD Campus Improvements, the PD Long Range, the study, and 10180 Iron Rock Way Tenant Improvements. The second column there identifies the total costs, which is consistent with what you just heard, and then in the final column, four of these projects are recommended for financing under a, under a bond. As far as outstanding debt that is, that are the responsibilities of the city of Elk Grove, there, we have three outstanding bonds currently. The first one is the 2017 bond, that's a private placement with a bank. That was done to improve Laguna Palms Campus. The outstanding debt amount is about 2.7 million, where our average annual debt service is about $561,000. It's a 20-year bond that's going to expire in 2027. The second one is a public offering, it was done in 2018 for the city's animal shelter. The current bond, this current outstanding debt amount is 16.7 million. The average annual debt service is around $1.28 million. That's also a 20-year bond that will expire in 2038. And then our last one that we currently have outstanding is a private placement with a bank that was done in 2020 for the District 56 improvements and some improvements at Old Town Plaza. Old Town Plaza. The current balance is $8.8 million. The average annual debt service is $817,000. That one's a 15-year bond that's going to expire in the year 2035. And then the last one there is in red is what staff is proposing for this evening. It's a public offering for the police facilities. Our not-to-exceed amount is $14 million. We're going to come in a little over $13 million on that. The average annual debt service, this is an estimate at this time, we won't know the exact amount until the bonds close, but it's about $968,000. This is going to be a 20-year bond we're recommending that will expire in the year So the issuance that we are proposing for tonight is a public offering. It's a lease revenue bond, which is like a lease-leaseback between the city and the Elk Grove Finance Authority. Standard and Poor did conduct a rating analysis and determined that the bonds will have a double-A rating. The par amount is sufficient -- let's see, oh, it's going to close. We're estimating a close date of May 3, 2022. That par amount is approximately $13.375 million, so it's under the not-to-exceed of $14 million. And this is sufficient to pay for those four projects for the police department facilities. Our annual debt service, again, is estimated at $968,000, and then the term is 20 years with a final payment in 2042. The funding sources to pay the debt service on the bond corresponds to those funds that are responsible for the actual projects. So it's 80% from the capital facilities fund, the police piece of that, and then 20% from the city's capital reserve fund. And then if we -- auxiliary funding is from the capital reserve fund. And what that means is that if the capital facilities funds, for some reason, we don't -- staff does not anticipate it, but if it can't pull their share, then the capital reserve fund is our backup. As Sam just noted, there is -- one of these projects has need for immediate financing, and that is the Iron Rock Way Tenant Improvement Project. This one will repurpose the space that was vacated by two divisions, the Property and Evidence Division and the Forensics Division, and this will also expand facility for -- facilities for female officers. In order to continue the project, we need funding immediately so that it can continue without delay for these needed facilities. So there we are adding an additional recommendation outside of the bond financing to amend the current year budget and the capital improvement program in order to fully fund the project so it can move forward. So with that, staff is making recommendation to approve four resolutions. The first two resolutions will authorize the debt financing of the improvements and lease agreements. One is by the City Council, and the other is by the Finance Authority. The third resolution will authorize budget adjustments to complete and record the financing transactions. And then the fourth resolution will authorize adjustments to the budget and the capital improvement program to fund that tenant improvement program or project at Iron Rock Way. And with that, I am available for your questions. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you for that excellent presentation. I will go ahead and declare that the public hearing is now open and open up the public comment opportunity.
For our participants in the Zoom environment, now would be the opportunity to use the raised hand feature for item 10.3. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, there were no prior written comments submitted in relation to item 10.3 on tonight's agenda. As I go over our list, we don't have anyone signed up to speak from the chamber. We do not have the raised hand feature being utilized by any of the folks in the Zoom environment, but we do have various representatives. If there are any questions, we can unmute them and bring them in as required. But they're in attendance, but they're not using the raised hand feature at this point in order to jump in. That'll conclude public comment for item 10.3.
All right. I'll declare the public hearing is now closed. Any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Hume.
Thank you. Kara, on the slide that showed the outstanding debt, the first one was referenced as a 2017 private issuance. And then if you go over to the term and final payment, it says 20 years to 2027. Should that read 2037?
That particular one was a refunding of a 2007 bond.
Okay.
And so it's 20 years from the 2007 bond.
Great. Okay. And then my only comment here, and this is a good slide to say it, is, you know, when you look at pay-go versus bond financing, by my calculations, over the life of this bond, you know, it's an additional about $5.4 million in cost. And so that's, you know, roughly a third of the today's dollar project cost that we'll be paying in order to get these needed facilities in place right now. I don't disagree necessarily with doing that because I think we need to do it, but every time we do that, it adds to that annual nut that we got to put out, and that affects what we can do with the rest of our budget. So it's just mindful that it's never free money.
Correct. Yes, Vice Mayor Sune.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Hume. I was going to make a very similar point, and I also wanted to, Kara, just a confirmation question, you know, on the payment of the debt service. Is 80% relied on the capital facilities fee? Other than new home construction, is there any other way the capital facilities fee is generated or paid?
The revenues to that capital facilities fund, fee fund, are through building and through building permits.
Correct. But that's the only source.
That's the only source.
Right. And that's, you know, just to put a point on, Councilmember Hume, the, you know, we can either use revenue that we have or borrow, and this is what we're doing, borrowing, and we're increasing that liability on that balance sheet. And the method to pay is based on a cyclical industry. And this is not directed at you, Kara, it's just I'm making a general statement. And so if you look between now and 2042, it's a pretty good shot that there'll be a downturn in that cyclical business. And so that's what I worry about when, if we put on too much on that side of the ledger and we're -- our source of revenue to pay for is dependent upon that cyclical source, we're backfilling it with our reserves, but again, as Councilmember Hume mentioned, you know, it further obligates us. And so I just want to, you know, make that known to the public, is it's not free money. And we're -- we need it, no doubt about it, we need it, but it's something we don't take lightly. And thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Spies.
Yeah, I don't think I could say it any better than the way it's been said twice. It's, you know, when you're borrowing money, it's not free. These are important improvements that need to be made. So I consider that an investment. You know, in business, there are times that you have to use other people's money. And again, that's not free, but, you know, given the priorities, I think we need to do it. So, thank you.
Any comments or questions? Thank you for your presentation. I have nothing to add from what my colleagues have already stated, so thank you. I am looking for a motion. Motion one.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Let's see.
I'll just note that the second motion is the only one that you'll actually be taking as the Finance Authority.
Okay.
But for motion two, that is as the Board of Directors of Elk Grove Finance Authority.
Motion two.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion three.
Now we're back to being the council again.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion in a second for motion three. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion four.
Second.
Motion four, motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. So I will now adjourn the joint Elk Grove City Council slash Elk Grove Finance Authority meeting at 8:08 PM and go on to our item 11, council comments, reports, and future agenda items. I'll start with Councilmember Win.
Just something real lightly to report. Councilmember Hume and I had our first Homeless Task Force ad hoc meeting where Ms. Sarah Bonträger gave us an overview of some of the programs we have in place and things that we're doing. We are going to be meeting again shortly here to bring some items back to the council to discuss on what we can do here for our city. We want to be ahead of the game and address this issue as it continues to grow in our city.
Are there other members on the task force right now?
Councilmember Hume.
Just the two of you? You're not -- okay. Nonprofits yet or others? All right.
I think right now we're -- and I'll let Councilmember Hume chime in, but we're having our city team just kind of brief us on what's going on right now, what we have in our city, what we're doing here.
Right.
And then from there, we may look at bringing in other nonprofit organizations in the city, but we need to kind of see what we have going on first here before we look at who else we should bring to the table and how we can move forward with the issue. But I'll let Councilmember Hume chime in if there's anything else he'd like to add.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. I will go on to Councilmember Spies.
Nope. I've got nothing. Thank you.
All right. We'll go to Councilmember Hume.
Yeah, thank you. I had an RT meeting but nothing to report. And so just to kind of piggyback on what Councilmember Win was saying relative to the homelessness task force, we had a great presentation from Sarah Bonträger on efforts that we have within the city that are really helping those that are at threat of being homeless and/or that are transitioning out of homelessness. And it really was an enlightening discussion on kind of the success stories for those, for that population that really is on the bubble and/or it can be fairly easily transitioned back into productive society. And what I think Councilmember Win was talking about is we're trying to get ahead of the curve for the population that is either resistant to help or so far beyond, you know, easy rehabilitation and help that we're trying to figure out how we lessen the impact to the community, you know, given the sort of changing nature of things. And so we're going to be digging into things like the Boise decision and some of the legislation that, you know, what we can do to create that support network, but also to just prohibit the proliferation of encampments that disrupt the community and the quality of life of our residents. And then the last thing that I'd like to talk about as far as, I don't know if it's a future agenda item or just what, but, you know, we've had a couple of very tragic hit-and-run accidents in Elk Grove recently. And unfortunately, in both instances, really, two lives were lost. You have the victim now deceased, and you have the, in both cases, young driver whose life will be forever altered. So I was having a discussion with Barbara Rooney, who is the director and the governor's highway safety representative for the Office of Traffic Safety, and she says she has money ready to be deployed if we can come up with an innovative educational campaign or innovative strategy to raise pedestrian and bike awareness within the Elk Grove area. And so I would be curious, and I don't know if we want to get into the weeds and have this brought back or what, but I would be curious of how we can maybe think outside the box. And I thought, you know, it could even be like a contest within some of our high schools. In that way, it's high school-aged kids coming up with how best to speak to high school-aged kids. I mean, the idea I had was put a person with a steering wheel atop, you know, an assault rifle with some wheels on the assault rifle and a tagline that says, "Yeah, it's that dangerous." You know, I mean, just try and bake it into their heads that these machines kill people that quickly, and the life is lost and their lives is forever changed. And so if we can come up with some sort of program, she's got the money to deploy. So...
So, Councilmember Hume, I raised this similar with Chief Davis a few weeks back as well, and I know that they are looking into either a public service announcement and maybe we can incorporate those, but I don't know that it needs to be a council action item. I think we've got a great PD, very responsive, very creative when it comes to community engagement. So maybe connecting those resources with Chief Davis would go a long way, and then we'll trust you to come back with something.
Yes, ma'am, we will. We -- and we're welcome, we welcome any opportunity for innovative approaches to any of these issues that we're having, and this is a big one for us right now.
Yeah.
We absolutely will, and I'll continue to follow up.
Thank you.
How about enlisting our youth commission, if you want to bring in the youth?
Yeah, I think the youth commission is an invaluable resource as well. I think, you know, you'll -- I, you know, I think I personally, you know, very comfortable with the creative minds that come out of the Public Information Office already as it relates to the outreach with the community. And if you, you know, I think the resources that Councilmember Hume shared are an excellent outlet for you and the Vice Mayor's suggestions. Anybody else, my colleagues, if you have other areas of input, I'm sure this will be fluid, this is not a one-stop when it comes to a public service announcement.
Yeah, we're going to continue to work on it, just like we spoke earlier in the week. So we continue the educational campaign as well, enforcement. These are, you know, tragic situations, so we're going to do anything we can to try to stem it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Councilmember Hume?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Sune.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a Transportation Committee meeting for the Secretary of the Council of Governments last week. Nothing to report out. One thing I do want to highlight, though, in a couple of days, will be Councilmember Win's birthday, so happy early birthday. I caught that.
Are you going to sing?
You do not want me to sing.
Okay.
But if you start, I will follow.
No, I don't sing. How about a dance?
You're all about the dance routines, not us. Quick report for myself. As Chair of STA, we will be, we are recruiting a new executive director. The current director, Sabrina Drago, is stepping down to take on a new role in about 60 days or so. So that job description, we have a subcommittee identified, and that will be rolling out sometime next week. And then, you know, we had a great, wonderful celebration, our entire council, I believe, was, no, maybe Councilmember Spies, celebrating our boys' basketball victory at Old Town Plaza. It was wonderful to celebrate this historic win, and I want to thank our city staff to that, you know, working with the school district, really working with the school, with Elk Grove High School and the Thundering Herd, to create a public opportunity to celebrate them. The school district is doing a, within the school district and the school site, but this was a great way for the public to come in and celebrate. I was just recently selected to be the honorary co-chair for the 50th anniversary from the Metro Chamber for their cap-to-cap, so looking forward to --
Congratulations.
Not sure what that means, but that should be fun. And then I did want to share that I did have a great meeting earlier this morning with Airbnb, and I wanted to share that, the findings with my council colleagues. They are being proactive and want to have a strong working relationship with the City of Elk Grove. There are two technology platforms that they work with, with a lot of other cities. Elk Grove is not one of them, but we hope to be. And one is the law enforcement portal, and the other is the city portal. They have these technologies and platforms where it's a higher level of engagement with the various stakeholders. And so I've connected Chief Davis with the executives with Airbnb so that, you know, we can avoid tragedies like those that happened, you know, and it's real easy to say, well, Airbnb and house parties, they actually do a pretty good job regulating house parties nationwide, and they've really changed how the bookings work. So, but they want to create a partnership, and a partnership includes knowing where all of the vacation properties are, the rental properties, and who the homeowners are, so that in these events of emergencies, we have a point of contact immediately, but have a strong working relationship if and when future concerns should arise. So I look forward to hearing back from Chief Davis on those outcomes as well. But I wanted to share that, that they definitely are working very well proactively.
Thank you.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, for doing that. But, and also, I just want to confirm, I understand they've taken that house off their site, too, right? Good.
And the person that booked the site, because the homeowner, I mean, you know, that actually is the platform, house parties are not allowed, as it is. And so you have somebody who booked a site and used it as a house party, violating Airbnb's rules as well as the host's rules. So right now, the house itself is under review, but the person that's actually banned indefinitely, I believe permanently, is the person who booked the site, the client, the customer. And then we'll get more information as the investigation and information unfolds, but I wanted to share that bit of information with all of you. And then, given the recent tragedies with the mass shooting, I think since the last council meeting, we've had a number of tragedies, the mass shooting, and then the unfortunate hit-and-run accidents here and the homicide here. So I want to adjourn in the memory of all of those that we've lost in the last couple of weeks. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:18. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good night. Good night.